Where's your Irish spirit? Got me.
Cox got some Irish blood in his somewhere?
You know what, I wore a... I wore green. There we go. I wore green for the last four days doing these events. I didn't think about it today.
I had to go retrieve my tie from my son's closet.
Tell you what. Here we go, I'm covered.
Hey, welcome everybody to the March 15th Board of Supervisors meeting. Please join me in the flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Hey, we're going to start out the meeting on kind of a bright note. Declaring March 13th through the 19th Agricultural Week, National Ag Week in Tulare County. So, I'd like to call on Liza Teixeira to come up and say a few words and I will present her with a proclamation.
Thank you. Good morning. I am Liza Teixeira with the Tulare County Farm Bureau. National Agriculture Week is celebrated each year to coincide with the arrival of spring and provides us with the opportunity to recognize producers of food, fiber, flowers, forests, and fish. Less than 1% of our population is involved in farming and ranching, but this small group feeds our nation as well as many others around the world. Here in the US, we are blessed with a safe, reliable, and abundant year-round supply of food. We spend less per capita on food than any country around the world. In fact, we just celebrated National Food Checkout Week, which recognizes that the average American family of four will have earned enough money by the third week of February to fund all of their purchases for the entire year. It's my pleasure to be here at the Board of Supervisors this morning and we appreciate you recognizing National Ag Week for us.
Hey, Liza, if you'd meet Neil here, I've got a proclamation. Okay, I'd like to read this proclamation to you this morning. Tulare County's total gross agricultural production for 2009 was $4 billion. Tulare County claims $45 million crops and crops that total in excess of $1 million in crop value to the county. The county produces more than 240 agricultural commodities. Milk has been the total gross value of $1.2 billion with milk and milk products representing 30% of the county's total receipts for 2009. And Tulare County produces more than 20% of the state's total milk production. Oranges are the second-largest crop with $467 million in production with nearly half of the orange crops being exported overseas. Grapes rank as the third-largest value crop at $443 million and Tulare County's dairy industry produces cattle and calves ranking as the fourth-largest value crop at $414 million. Therefore, Tulare County's fruit and nut crops total $1.8 billion in gross value. Now therefore be resolved that Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby declare March 15th, 2011 as National Agricultural Day and March 13th through the 19th National Agricultural Week in Tulare County to celebrate the achievements of the men and women who worked throughout the year in agricultural industry. The Board of Supervisors, Alan Ashida, Pete Vanderpool, Philip Cox, Stephen Worley, and Mike Ennis. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess we'll start with our... We'll start with our calendar and the art winners. So, Liza?
Spring and National Ag Week also serve as a backdrop for our annual calendar art contest. The Tulare County Farm Bureau with sponsorship from the Tulare County Office of Education and Network for a Healthy California sponsored the calendar art contest for elementary and high school students in the county. I would like to extend a special thanks to Jim Vaidak, County Superintendent of Schools, for his ongoing support of this activity, which brings agriculture into the classroom in a creative and colorful format. Mr. Vaidak brought this program to the Farm Bureau many years ago. I also want to say thank you to Randy Wallace, Rob Herman, Noni Roland, and their dedicated teams at the County Office of Education who helped make this annual calendar possible. This year, we had more than 1,100 entries from dozens of schools. Our overall winner received $50 cash and our other 13 winners received $25 in cash. It is now my pleasure to announce the winners of this year's calendar art contest. As I call your name, please come forward to receive your certificates and prize to be presented to you by your county supervisor. From District 1, we have Matthew Jones, a 9th grader from Exeter Union High School. Please come forward.
I have a certificate on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and also Mark Pugh, congratulations.
From District 2, Pete Vanderpool, we have Yaneth Mendoza, an 8th grader from Tipton Elementary.
Hi Yaneth. I'm sorry, I took a little... I wanted to present you with a prize and then a certificate of recognition for your outstanding artwork. Isn't that beautiful everyone? Congratulations, great work.
Next, we have Tristan Moff, a 7th grader from Cherry Avenue Middle.
Congratulations, I kept my paper put together, so it makes a mess. But congratulations for outstanding work. You have a couple certificates and a prize there as well. Ready for a picture? Hey, congratulations.
Rosyella Jimenez, a 5th grader from Waukina. Destiny Gonzalez, a 6th grader from Early Mart Middle.
You made Early Mart very proud, I know that. Congratulations, thank you.
Lilian Castaneda, a 7th grader from Cherry Avenue Middle.
Don't bulldog, that's why I'm assuming you're not. That's really great. I never move features like this because I can draw like you. Good job.
You're not going to either.
Lizette Fregoso, a 7th grader from Cherry Avenue Middle.
Is that three Cherry Avenue bulldogs?
I think so.
You're a bulldog, yeah?
From District 3, Supervisor Phil Cox, we have Rebecca Lechman, a 5th grader from Royal Oaks. Morgan Fletcher, a 10th grader from Mount Whitney High School. District 4, Supervisor Steve Worley, we have Adrian Garza, a 7th grader from Washington Intermediate School. Clarissa Acosta, an 8th grader from Kings River School. Rosa Alvarado, a 7th grader from Washington Intermediate. I'm not sure if she's here. Maria Aguire, a 12th grader from Orocy High School. And I don't believe she's here with us this morning. Still give her a round of applause. And our overall winner featured on the cover of this year's calendar is Deonera Barajas, a 12th grader from Orocy High School. Thank you for all of our students and teachers and parents for coming here today and for the supervisors for having this presentation. I have a box of calendars for anybody that wants some and if I could ask the students to meet me outside for a group picture.
Thank you, Liza, very much. And thanks to all the young people for being here this morning. Yeah, wait just a minute if you would. I think the supervisor would like to say a few words too. But I felt kind of bad I didn't have anybody from my district. I guess I don't have any artists over in the district over there. So, I'm going to have to wake some people up. You know, I used to be pretty good at finger painting, but that's about it. But no, I really, we really appreciate everybody being here this morning and I'll let the supervisors all say something too to you. Thank you.
This is one of the favorite times of the year for the Board of Supervisors to hand out these awards to recognize the achievements of the young people that we have in our county. And this calendar will go on my wall, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say, you know, congratulations to all the recipients for your hard work and taking the initiative to do this. But I also want to acknowledge and commend the art instructors at the various schools. I know that much of this is a consequence of their involvement and initiative. And without them and their participation, we probably would have very few applicants. So, my thanks to the art instructors. I know these are difficult times in public schools as in all governmental agencies and there's a tendency to want to cut back on certain things we see as being peripheral and sometimes art and music programs are looked at in that way. But they are very integral and important to the education of our children. So, I want to thank the school districts for their continued participation in art programs and for the instructors and for the students that participated today. So, thank you so much.
That's so true. We partner so many times with the school district. I see Rob Herman here with the Office of Education. The partnership we have with the schools to make things like this happen is really a wonderful thing. And congratulations to all the winners and again echoing Supervisor Worley's words, thank you to the school districts that help us make things like this happen.
Just want to commend all of the award winners today, not only the ones from my district, which I'm extremely proud of. We had a lot of people from Tulare and District 2, Tipton and Early Mart and Waukina, all the surrounding areas. So, real proud of you guys. It was great work and this calendar is absolutely beautiful. I think this is, echo the same comments were made by my fellow colleagues. But I think it's very important as well that we have our young people and the students draw and portray agriculture because as was mentioned earlier by Liza, less than 1% of the population of the United States is involved in agriculture. But yet it is so important not only to Tulare County's economy but to the state's economy and our nation's economy. So, it's really great to see the young people and the students be educated about agriculture and portray agriculture in such a wonderful light. So, thank you very much for all your effort and all of your work. Congratulations and please keep up the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is an action item declaring this National Ag Week.
I'll move. I'll second that motion.
Moved by Supervisor Worley, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpool. Cast your votes, the vote is unanimous. Thank you very much. So, if you guys wish to go take your pictures, thank you so much for being here again. We appreciate it so much. Thank you.
You know, they want to get back to school too.
Absolutely. Can't wait.
Okay, we will move to item number 2, Public Comment. Anybody wishing to approach the board on matters that are not on the agenda? You may do so at this time under Public Comment. Okay, seeing no one, let's, we'll move from Public Comment to Board of Supervisors Matters. I will call on Carol Pytling to come up and go over the new redistricting with the board. Thank you.
Morning. I'm Carol Pytling from the County Administrator's Office. And I'd like to explain what's going to be happening this morning with the selection of the nominees for the Citizens 2011 Redistricting Advisory Committee. Every 10 years, when new census data becomes available, jurisdictions like the county are required to reevaluate their supervisory districts and redistrict if necessary. On February 15th, your board approved the formation of a 2011 Redistricting Advisory Committee to be composed of 11 citizens, two from each supervisory district, and one at-large member. The application period was closed last Tuesday, March 8th at 5:00 PM. The committee's function will be first to make recommendations to your board about the criteria that will be used in forming new districts if new districts become necessary. And their second function, of course, will be to recommend to the board at least three different supervisory redistricting options based on the criteria that were established. The nominees for the committee will be selected and announced this morning and the final appointments will be made during the regular board meeting next Tuesday, March 22nd. From the applications received from each district, the supervisor representing that district will select one nominee. The names of the remaining applicants from that district will be placed in the pink baskets that are in front of each of you and the clerk will draw a name for the second nominee from each district. Once that has been completed, all the remaining application names will be placed in a single basket and Chairman Ennis will be asked to announce the 11th at-large member. Are there any questions so far? Okay, beginning with District 1. Applications were submitted by Newell Brinhurst, Bernice Doane, Jacqueline Fletcher, Glenn Morris, A.G. Peterson, Maria Santos Silva, Terry Thompson, and Patmila Whitmire. Supervisor Ashida, would you please announce the first nominee that you selected?
I want to say it was very difficult. Everyone that applied was very well-qualified. With that, I'm going to place Bernice Doane's name into nomination.
Thank you. The remaining names are in the basket in front of you. The clerk will please select one name and if you'll pass that to Supervisor Ashida.
It'll be Newell Brinhurst.
Thank you. Okay, moving to District 2. Applications were submitted by John Marshall Hobbs, Jen... You'll pardon me. Geneva Islas, Marie Macedo, and Mike Watson. Supervisor Vanderpool, have you made your selection?
I have and I also want to echo the comments made by Supervisor Ashida. It was very difficult. I had four very qualified applicants and I appreciate the four of those people for applying and being willing to get involved and affect the process because you can always complain about things, but it's real nice to see people actually step up and take the initiative to do something about it. So, I appreciate that greatly and my nominee will be John Marshall Hobbs.
Thank you. If the clerk will select one of the remaining names?
The name is Mike Watson.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to District 3. Applications for District 3 were submitted by Trilby Lee Barton, Philip Bordette, Mary Burberry, Gary Dill, Luke Feldstein, Russ Hanson, Darlene Mata, Stephen Peck, and Lita Reed. Supervisor Cox, would you make your announcement?
Again, very difficult, very qualified people. My choice because of his technical skills will be Stephen Peck.
Thank you. The remaining applicant names are in the basket.
And this Philip Bordette.
Philip Bordette. Thank you. Moving to District 4. Applications were submitted for District 4 from Louis Earl Mann and Maggie Flores. And because there were only two applications from that district, no drawing will be necessary.
I would like to just say just very quickly, I appreciate the two that did step up to request to participate in this process. There was an individual that I had specifically asked to apply and he indicated he was going to, but because of health issues missed the deadline. But I'm very glad we have two people in District 4 to step up and do this very important role. Thanks, my thanks to them.
And moving to District 5. Applications were submitted by Katie Black, Michael Carley, and Richard Eckhoff. Supervisor Ennis?
Yeah, there again, I want to say we have three very well-qualified people here. I chose Richard Eckhoff because of his involvement throughout the communities, not only in Porterville but Springville area. So, Richard Eckhoff is my person.
Thank you. And the clerk will hand you...
Michael Carley.
Michael Carley, thank you. Okay, now all of the remaining names of applicants from all five districts are in the basket that the clerk is, now has in hand. She'll select one name and if Chairman Ennis will read that name?
From District 3, Mary Burberry.
Thank you. That concludes the selection of the nominees. So, in quick review from District 1, the nominees are Newell Brinhurst and Bernice Doane. From District 2, John Marshall Hobbs and Mike Watson. From District 3, Philip Bordette and Stephen Peck. From District 4, Louis Earl Mann and Maggie Flores. From District 5, Michael Carley and Richard Eckhoff and our 11th at-large member, Mary Burberry. As we said, appointments will be made at the next board meeting on March 22nd. Are there any other questions?
Okay, thank you Carol.
Oh, we're good to go. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to Supervisor Matters. We'll start with Supervisor Vanderpool.
Okay, just a couple things this morning. First of all, I would just like to say that speaking of National Ag Week, tonight we have the Dairy Herd Improvement Association of Tulare's Awards Banquet and Dinner down in Tulare that is recognizing the different dairies in Tulare for quality of milk, volume of milk, and just their overall dairy operation. So, I'm really excited about that and that should be a great event. And then I also wanted to make mention being that I'm the chairman of the Tulare County Association of Governments. Next Monday, I believe, at the VISA convention center is the Tulare County Association of Governments Unmet Needs Hearing. So, I'd like to encourage as many people as possible to attend that event. It's always great to see public input when we're considering the various... It's always great to see public input when we're considering the various transit and transportation needs throughout the county, so thank you.
Supervisor Cox?
I had the opportunity this weekend to represent the board in the Step-Up Program at the St. Patrick's Day Parade in Visalia. We actually had an information booth where we handed out information about the Summer Night Lights program, and we also cosponsored a art contest, partnering with Visalia Unified School District. Last year, they had art contests, had, I think, about a hundred applicants this year through our partnership with Visalia Unified. We had over four hundred applicants. It was a big, tall pile. The grand incentive was for the class with the most participants to receive a visit from the A&W root beer truck. And the Manuel Hernandez Elementary School, third grade class, will receive the visit from the A&W root beer truck this, next week.
That's pretty good.
Can we all go over?
Yeah. I'll report on the quality control. To the victor go the spoils. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to call attention, this Friday at ten o'clock, we're going to be having a groundbreaking ceremony at, for the Goshen Grade Separation Project, a tremendous project for the community of Goshen and for the city of Visalia, especially their industrial park, as a part of a larger process to improve the access off of and to the ninety-nine from the industrial park, and a great public safety factor. Right now, we have at-grade crossings on a very, one of the most active railroads, I believe, in the country, the U.P. line that runs through up and down central California. And this over-grade crossing will allow not only pedestrians, but also, of course, automobiles and trucks to be able to cross over without having to be stopped because of oncoming traffic, and a tremendous safety factor, and a great Measure R project also, in combination with federal and local funds to pay for that. So, a good project, and I just quickly will mention, because it's on our consent calendar this morning, but we're going to be taking action this morning, I am assuming, to do the next phase of Road Eighty project. And I think of note is the fact that our engineer's estimate on this project was about sixteen and a half million dollars, and the winning bid actually comes in at just about two and a half million dollars under that. So these are great times for projects such as these, to build our systems which are in need of repair and expansion, and we're getting tremendous prices for them. So those are the hot items that are happening, they just happen to be happening in District Four. But also, to wish all of my colleagues on the board and the folks who are here, a happy St. Patrick's Day coming up on this coming Thursday.
Supervisor Ashida?
This morning, I would like to introduce Denise Atkins. Would you please stand? Denise is water, she's going to be an administrative analyst, and her expertise will be water resources. And I believe that we've made a very important step in devoting the time and staff energy to look at water issues in Tulare County, and I welcome you, and I'm sure you're going to find out, even though you have an engineering degree, that water is a very complicated subject, so welcome aboard.
So do we call her the Water Queen of Tulare County? Welcome aboard, Denise. Okay, this Wednesday, which is tomorrow, Supervisor Cox and I and our Jeff Forbes will be going to Porterville to a gang meeting at the police department there, so hopefully we're going to see something going forward, maybe a gang summit in the Porterville area, so looking forward to that meeting tomorrow. Okay, let's move on to the consent calendar. Anybody wish to pull anything from the consent calendar? If not?
Move, approval.
Moved by Supervisor Ashida, seconded by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes. It's unanimous. Okay, now we'll move to our addendums. Actually handle these as one. Addendum one through four on Tulare County Redevelopment Agency Funds.
Good morning, Chairman Ennis, fellow board members, Roger Hunt, Assistant RMA Director. The first item that we have is a request to transfer some grants that were in the Redevelopment Agency. Through the audit of the Redevelopment Agency for the financial statements for the year ending 2010, it was found by the outside auditor, as well as the county auditor, that there is community development block grants and home grants that should not be in the redevelopment, or in some cases, the general fund, but instead in a special revenue fund, actually two special revenue funds, one for CDPG or Community Development Block Grant, and the other for Home. They also found, they also found that program income from the Neighborhood Stabilization Program One should be in a separate trust fund. And this affects ten grants, four that were in the general fund, five that were in the redevelopment funds, and then there's one that was a Caltrans grant that should be moved from redevelopment over to the general fund. So in all, there were ten grants that were going to be affected. Additionally, in this request, we also have a request to do a budget adjustment for the Rich Grove redevelopment area, to increase the property tax revenue by thirty-five thousand to recognize the anticipated increases there, and that will cover existing costs that we've already incurred for that area. And with that, if you have any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I would just make one comment. Just for clarification for the public, as we talk about all of these changes to redevelopment and everything, everyone is very worried that we're going to be losing redevelopment, and that the county could be responsible for that. Just want to be clear that that is directly a result of the state budget and not action upon the county.
Well, with regards to this action, this, the reason for the movement of the grants from redevelopment is because, in reality, they should not have been in redevelopment. They are not redevelopment grants. They are community development block grants and home grants for community development, just as the Caltrans grant was not a redevelopment grant. So it really need to be recognized outside of redevelopment, and that's why the move.
This more or less is putting our house in order, is what we're doing.
Yes.
Good. Questions? And this isn't a public hearing, so would, do I hear a?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Supervisor Worley, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpoel. Cast your votes. The vote is unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes the regular part of our.
Well, there's, there's.
That was one.
That was just one item.
Okay, we got to do them separately?
There was a, one for the board supervisors and one for the Board of Directors for Redevelopment for the transfer of the grant funds. We have a second that has, with a companion item.
Okay.
Regarding the redevelopment.
So is the board, did they take action to approve items one and three? So they need to make that clear in the motion?
Yes, one and two.
One and three, I believe.
One and three.
In the motion, can you amend your motion to approve items one and three?
That was my motion.
Okay.
That was my second as well.
Thank you. Sorry for that confusion.
That's fine.
Got to make it clear.
So this will be two and four?
Yes. As you may be aware, the state is proposing to eliminate the Redevelopment Agency, and there is draft legislation that's before the state now to consider, to eliminate redevelopment agencies. And once, if this legislation is approved, it'll be signed by the governor, and it's, will go into effect immediately. And for that reason, we're bringing this item to you today. They actually had almost voted on it last week. There's a possibility they'll vote on it this week. And you may have seen where a number of jurisdictions throughout the state have made moves to protect the assets of redevelopment. And so we felt that your board needs to have the opportunity to consider similar action. Again, upon approval of the bill, all redevelopment activities would be suspended through June thirtieth, and then as of July first of this year, the agency would be abolished. The county would be elected, would be, become the successor agency, since it's the agency that established the Redevelopment Agency. There would be an oversight board that would be formed, and would be representatives selected from the Board of Supervisors, two of them, and four from the superintendent of schools, and one from the largest non-enterprise special district, if, so long as there's one within territory of the Redevelopment Agency. But we're not sure exactly who that would be at this point. The financial flow chart shows that the state would do the pass-through payments, and then in item number two, that would be the, where it says grant to the state of California, actually it's where the 1.7 billion dollars that's in the bill would be taken from redevelopment accounts throughout the state, and that money would be used for trial courts and Medi-Cal costs, according to the bill language. Then they would, and of course, for Tulare County, and as for the others, it would be based upon the unreserved, undesignated fund balance, and it would be based upon Tulare County's percentage of the total for the state. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to find out what that ratio is. I was able to look at the net assets as, and it's as of 2009, not 2010, so it's almost two years ago that they'll be using these dollar amounts for the basis of perform, of the percentage that would be taken. But if, looking at overall statewide, in 2009, net assets were around seventeen billion dollars, I believe, and Tulare County was somewhere in the neighborhood of like six million, six to seven million. It worked out to point zero four percent. And so if you were to apply that to the 1.7 billion, you're looking at probably the neighborhood around 750,000. However, net assets are not the same as the unreserved, undesignedated fund balance. And with all the actions that have taken place, there's probably a lot of that undesignedated, unreserved, that's no longer that way throughout the state. There was recent actions with, I believe, with Alameda County, and then just more recently, there's been items with the city of Visalia, city of Tulare, city of Bakersfield, also Fresno. The following year, 2012, thirteen, is pretty much the same as this year, except for the take of the 1.7 billion. And what would happen is that there would no longer be any tax increment, and so the property taxes would flow as they would have if there had been no Redevelopment Agency. But there would still be the Oversight Committee that would be dealing with the disposition of the assets that remain within the former, former agency. Just to give you a feel for things, the unreserved, undesignedated fund balance, as I mentioned, actually, in 2009, for Tulare County, was about 5.1 million. And as of June of 2010, it was only 4.2 million. So it has shrunk, and we believe that as of 2011, it will be even less, then of course, depend upon the actions today. Our long-term liabilities, as of the end of 2010, were about 6.4 million. The restricted net assets in housing were our 3.3 million. And we have, here on this slide, have the local impacts. The real property would be also dissolved and liquidated, and proceeds would go to the state to pay off obligations.
May I ask a question? When you say there would be no more tax increments, there will still be continuing tax increments to pay for these obligations, is that not correct? Or is that a different terminology that I should be using there?
I believe so.
Which?
Obligations, Lori Mercer with the Resource Management Agency. The obligation that we have for the county, the liabilities that we have, we will still be able to pay those liabilities.
And the revenue comes from the same tax stream?
Yes. All the monies in the housing funds, since there would be no longer be a Redevelopment Agency, would be transferred to the county, should the county want to retain the housing functions. If the house, if the county doesn't retain the housing functions, it would go to the housing authority for Tulare County. This slide has the responses of some of the local entities, and you can see that there's been authorized land purchases, there's been transfers of assets, there's been increased payments on debt, there's also been cooperative and service agreements. And it's from these actions that we've sort of drew as an example of what we put together a cooperative agreement for your consideration. So the proposed actions are to protect the local funds, to make prepayments on existing debt. We have existing debt in Cutler Rosy, and Goshen, and Rich Grove. And unfortunately, as an example for Rich Grove, there is no money in the capital project side, really, to pay off the long-term debt that's there. Some amounts in Cutler Rosy and Goshen to pay down those. The second item that we're considering is the cooperation agreements, and in Exhibit A is the projects that are listed. These are things that we are already in the process of doing, and normally, because redevelopment works closely with counties, well, is county staff, working with other county departments, including RMA, there's work that has been going on that there hasn't been a formal agreement. And we want, this cooperative agreement would formalize that, so that there would be an obligation. There's still some question as to whether or not the state will recognize the cooperative agreement as a enforceable obligation. It's something, though, that the other cities are using, and so we'll see how it stands. But there are projects, as you go through, you can see that, as an example, in Earlymark, we're doing a curb and gutter sidewalk project on the north side of Washington Street, looking at 183,000 dollars, and it's being done through county forces. We want to make sure that we're able to obligate that. We would also ask to transfer the remaining monies that are in capital projects, around 2.3 million dollars, to the housing funds, so that it would stay with the county. To protect the property and assets, we would recommend transferring the properties and the fixed assets. There is on Exhibit C, or I should say, yeah, Exhibit C, the list of the properties, those, there are those properties associated with the Betty Drive project that are still under redevelopment at this time, and there's one piece of property in Pixley.
The Pixley property was purchased for future economic development activities, but at this time, will not be pursuing those.
And then on Exhibit D is a list of equipment, and most of the equipment there is associated with the Construction and Trades Training Program. We would also ask that the county establish itself as the successor agency, which, because you created the Redevelopment Agency, it would naturally fall to the county. But we thought, even though it may be redundant or moot, that go ahead and do it anyway. That way it's clearly stated. This is a spreadsheet showing the unreserved, undesignedated fund balance of 4.2 million, and then if you take out the grant match, which we have, which I should probably have spoke to, is that we have a number of matches that were already approved by your board through resolution, but had not been encumbered yet. And so we're in the process of encumbering those funds, and we felt And so we're in the process of encumbering those funds, and we felt that we need to reflect that by subtracting it from the 4.2 million, leaving us with an adjusted fund balance of 3.4 million, then subtracting out the long-term debt, and then the cooperative agreement, and then the remainder to the housing, so that all of the 4.2 million would be allocated. We have a proposed amendment to the resolution, effectively brought amended agenda item and resolution to elect, retain the housing rights. It was something that we hadn't, didn't have to necessarily do today, but we felt that since we're doing these other actions, we should just go ahead and bring it to you. The impacts of these proposed actions, if we prepay the debt, that means that there's less funds available for the projects if the bill is not approved. Now, this is moving along with the idea that the bill will be approved, however, if it isn't, you still have the capital projects funds, you still have the redevelopment agency, but now you'll have less money to do projects on the community improvement side. With the cooperative agreement, again, the state may not recognize it as a valid obligation. And then of course, transferring the monies into the housing funds, it cannot be returned to capital projects. Once it moves to the four funds, to the housing funds, it has to stay there.
Can we, excuse me, Chairman, can we go back to the prior slide? Because I think it's important. The slide with the various project areas and the dollar amounts. This is the 80% pot that we've been talking about. There are two pots in redevelopment predominantly. There's the 80% pot, which is, which today we're referring to as capital improvements, and the other pot is low and moderate income housing, the 20% pot. The 20% pot is not subject to state action at this time. What we're trying to do is we're trying to, you know, as has been presented, identify the grants that we've already obligated a match from redevelopment for. So that's the second, the second row. The fifth row, and we prioritized grant matches, payoff long-term debt, and then the cooperative agreement. And the reason why we did that is, is because the sooner we pay off the debt associated with these project areas, the sooner that increment will change to general fund property taxes. The increment will be there as long as the debt's there to pay off the debt, and the auditor against her will is going to be doing a lot of that work for the county, for not only the county's redevelopment agency, but for all the city redevelopment agencies, and that's part of the legislation. The cooperative agreement is the second row from the bottom, and that's where we identified various projects, not, projects and work that we wanted to do that are in our redevelopment updated plans. We feel, you know, strong that we can, and we will certainly fight the state if they come in and try to redirect those monies. The whole idea today is to protect this pot of money either by obligating it, paying off debt, or transferring it to the low and moderate income bucket. It's not something we wanted to do, but we, in order to protect these monies, keep them local, keep them for local projects, they won't be for capital improvements unfortunately, but they will certainly go to low and moderate income housing type of activities where there is money available and left over.
And you can see the, you can see the three areas, Earlymark, Pixley, and Traver, where there's the most money in capital projects that would be transferred.
Mr. Chair, I ask, how, you know, transferring the monies in the housing funds, how flexible are the guidelines for that? Because the capital projects, I would assume are water projects, storm drains, you know, maybe storm drain retention basins, you know, I'm going to call those capital improvement projects.
Yes, those are infrastructure.
Does that include curb gutters, sidewalks, street repairs? So how much are we limiting ourselves transferring those monies into the housing funds?
There is an extreme limit on it. However, there are some options that you could do, infrastructure and supportive housing, as long as you are creating the new housing units. So we have some creative thinking going on to come up with projects so that we can do some additional infrastructure. But it does have to be based on the number of units of housing that are being created.
New units.
New units.
Mr. Chair, just, first of all, I apologize on my question earlier when I asked regarding the cleaning up of the house items that we did in the first agenda items, I wasn't sure which ones we were taking up. I thought it was all under one bunch, but I, so my apologies for that question. But it would apply here, but you've already clarified, so. Then I'll ask you as well, I know in one of the redevelopment areas, Earlymark, for example, there's, one of the major issues with the constituents down there are some of the neighborhoods and the upkeep of neighborhoods, and I've addressed some of those issues. Is there any way that we can use any of the low to moderate income housing monies to fix up those areas if we are going to repair housing units? Or does it have to be new housing units to utilize that money?
Yeah, we can still do the housing rehabilitation program.
Okay.
The first-time home buyer program, those, the emergency, housing emergency program, those types of programs will continue.
Okay.
The clarification that I was trying to make was if we're going to try to do any infrastructure-type projects.
Okay.
With that pot of fun, that pot of money, we need to be very clear on what the project is. And there is some stipulation that if you do infrastructure and supportive housing, you can use the housing funds, but that will have to be very, we're going to have to vet that with county council very carefully to make sure that we're following the correct procedures. There's also additional grant funding out there that we will utilize the pot of funds to leverage, continue to leverage like we have done in the past. And we will look at different pots of funds in an effort to spend down those monies on combination projects if it is permitted.
Okay, thank you.
A question I have is that I know in Traver instance, that there has been a significant amount of funds that have been accumulated for housing projects. And once these funds go into this general pot, are they still segregated in the sense that they are allocated back to the point of origin? I mean, these were taxes collected in Traver, you know, I, my, my hope is then that they were going to continue to put those monies back to that community, which has paid the price for that.
Yes, those, the funds will still remain designated for each of the communities, individual communities. They'll have their own pot of funds, they'll be designated.
Kind of a subset within their, yeah, yeah, thank you.
I think the idea here today is to, if this redevelopment goes away, is to protect the funds the best we can. And the best we can is to move them into these different areas.
We know that.
Am I reading that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
You know, and I also, along that vein, refer, bless you, refer back to Exhibit A on some of the things that came out of the redevelopment plan updates. One, one in particular that's near and dear to my heart, two actually, are developing stormwater master plans for communities before we do, you know, future type of infrastructure, sidewalks and what have you. Second thing that came out that was a significant, of significant importance to folks is cleanup day, clean up my community. And that's something we as not only redevelopment, but we need to have our partners from other departments involved in. Because the cleaner a community is, the better chance a community has of having more of a, preventing gang type of activities and what have you. And that's really critical. So these are items that came out of the scoping meetings, and they're things that I look forward to Resource Management finishing up here in the next year or two.
I just wanted to add that we do know that if the bill passes, that there will be a take. We just, we're not sure exactly how much the take will be for Tulare County. Giving you a kind of an idea of what I think it's going to be, but I'm not certain. And of course, last year, there was a take of 1.3 million for CRF, and this year, there's 279,000. That's a part of CRF that's also going to be paid to the state from out of redevelopment. I think there's another slide. Is there one more? I did want to say that regardless of what the state intending to do, that the transfer of the property, the fixed assets, those were things that we felt should be done anyway. And in particular, we found through our assessment of the Construction and Trades Training Program that it really wasn't beneficial, you know, when you look at the overall cost associated with the program, that particularly given the climate that we're in with the economy and the competition for contracts, that you can get the work done throughout, by bid pretty good and get good results. And so we would recommend transferring the, those fixed assets to the county anyway.
Mr. Chair, I know that this isn't a public hearing, but I know that I at least have a couple constituents that would like to comment relating, or had mentioned to me they might want to comment regarding the transfer of this money and being constituents with an interest in this redevelopment, in these redevelopment areas. I just wanted to make sure that we gave opportunity in case there were any here that wanted to comment.
Okay. Anyone here that would like to speak to this item?
Sorry, I need to simmer down a little bit. Good morning, my name is Reina Castellanos, a community member. Many of you may have seen me at different meetings, primarily concerned with just the public, general public, your everyday workers. When I hear everything that is going on today, and just the rapidness in making decisions, and the fact that these meetings are held at nine o'clock, when I know I shouldn't be here, I need to be working. Many of the people that I see here are being paid, so. This information would have been very important to go out to your general public before you make a decision, before you decide to just take away all the remaining funds. Maybe there wouldn't be funds in redevelopment if the projects would have been completed in a timely manner, if there wouldn't have been so much postponing. Maybe there wouldn't be so much money used in the wrong areas if planning and actual community advocacy would have been taken into consideration. Now out of a sudden, I see the RMA department a lot more than I have in the past years. Main reason, because they're about to go away. Now I'm wondering if in those monies that are going to be turned over to the county, they're also including their salaries. It's a great concern to see that the communities that we have worked so hard, getting together with the people, actually getting their public opinion. I know I spent numerous hours knocking on doors, talking to people to see what their needs were, so that we can make, facilitate your work, and well, everybody's work here, by actually bringing true statements of what the true needs are of the community. And out of a sudden, I feel that, all that time, and going out and doing grassroots organizing was just a waste of time. It is very, very saddening to see that this is what it's come down to. I did my work, and I continue to do it, even though I'm not a community organizer anymore, with the best intent that the public would be heard. I know many people who would have loved to be here today. And it's very saddening that they're not here, because now those communities that are in flood zones, those communities that don't have proper street lighting, are not going to get those projects met. I know that the money is going to be transferred to housing, but we all know that it's not going to be affordable housing. It's going to be to the best interest of the county, and housing might be developed, but it'll be whatever's most beneficial to the county. If it's going to bring in revenue, let's do it. I don't think that this decision should be made final, it should be on a contingency basis if needed. And I know that this is a great opportunity, because my golly, it's Brown who's proposed to take away these funds. So whether the county ends up in a bad position because of the decision you're making today or not, it doesn't matter, because it was Brown who forced us into this decision to act upon, upon this in, in a very quick manner without really taking into consideration how many people might have a second opinion, a second voice about it. Let's just act, doesn't matter. We're not to blame. It's Brown's fault, he forced us into this decision. I'm very sorry for the people who volunteered so much time to let you know what the needs were, and it didn't really matter.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'd like just to respond. Ran, I appreciate your being here this morning. Actually, this is an effort to try to protect what you've worked so hard to accomplish. If we do nothing today, and the state steps in and takes all these funds away from Tulare County, then we have nothing to work with, because, you know, your appeal would be better made at the state level, because we're not the ones proposing to take away redevelopment project. It's the state that's proposing to do that. And they, the governor proposes, the legislature has to act. And all indications are at this point in time, the legislature is going to go along with the governor's proposal, because the state is in tremendous financial straits, and they're looking for any funds they can. So many other places, they used to get money from pots of money, transportation used to be a big one, the voters have cut that off. They used to create fees, take a tax, turn it into a fee, the voters have cut that off. So the voters have, and this legislature have tied the legislature to the point where they're so limited in trying to get this $28 billion hole filled, they've now looked at redevelopment agencies, and the proposal is to do away with them, to take all of their assets. By keeping the assets that we can in Tulare County, we are keeping open the opportunity to do things with these funds locally. Nothing is being done here today as an act of, we don't care the work that was done by your organization, others, in terms of reaching out to the community. You know I've been at all these meetings, all these different communities, and it was not done with the intention of what we're doing here today. It was done with the intention of continuing on with redevelopment agency programs. But if there is no redevelopment agencies, and there are no programs, other than what we can conserve and protect today, that's what we're doing. This is not something which was planned in advance, long-term, because it's a short-term situation. We, you have to react to what's happening, and that's what we're doing today. But I feel good about what we're trying to do in terms of keeping these funds here locally to use for our local projects. And the fact that they're going to be still segregated into the communities where the funds originate means we still will be able to use funds in those local communities. Now, will we be more limited? Absolutely. But to the extent we can use the funds locally for our own projects, and I can tell you, a lot of these funds were designated for low-income housing projects and infrastructure associated with new construction. That's a very important aspect here. I mean, this again is not something we're doing at all to, we're not reacting in a negative way to the work that was done by people such as yourself and the, in the community people that we represent. We are responding to a situation where if we don't act today, every indication is that all these funds will be taken to Sacramento to fill a hole in the state budget. And that's the only reason we're doing what we're doing today. We're not doing it for any other reason. And I'm sorry that you feel that this is an action taken against the people of Tulare County, I look at it as an action taken for the people of Tulare County. It's our local revenue, it's our local funds, we want to keep them here locally. If we don't act, they will be taken to the state of California and spread out to the state of California. We don't, we used to come out very well on those deals.
I'm not quite sure when, I'm the one who walked the streets, I'm the one that saw what low-income housing is like. In your district, Cutler, Rosy, they build some low-income housing units. People who are farmworkers, who are probably earning anywhere between $24,000 to $25,000 a year as a family, were paying close to $900 in rent. $900 for low-income housing. How do I know? Many of them came to me because they needed help. They couldn't afford what they were paying for. If that's what you consider low-income housing?
Bam, that's not what's in front of us today. What's in front of us today is the fact that we're trying to keep all the assets in Tulare County that we've accumulated and we've obligated. Otherwise, the state of California is going to liquidate all those assets and take it to the state treasury.
I'd understand if this were to be doing.
I'm sorry, but we're not talking about low-income housing.
If this was being done on a contingency base, I could understand. But there's no turning back after this, and yet I never saw the public really involved. As a matter of fact, we only, we were notified yesterday about this. In many of the rural communities, there's no way, we all know that we have activists in our communities. in our communities, Mr. Hishida, Mr. Ennis, Steve, we all know who the activists are, and we all know that if we would have taken the responsibility to call upon them ourselves, they would have probably been here, and they would have probably said something about this issue.
You need them in the state of California, you don't, at the Capitol, we're reacting to what's happening, this forced...
And unfortunately, there won't be any turning back.
And, 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 Reina, I, I do have to tell you that I did call some, some of the people that I knew in my communities that had vested interests and had opinions, and they were in very much support of keeping these funds local, so that the money would not go to Sacramento, and they would stay here. So I did reach out to the people that I knew couldn't be here today, or maybe they are here, but they just wanted to reiterate their support for this issue and for keeping these funds local, so I just wanted to make that point clear.
And, and that's the reason we had to move on this, because it's happening right now, not next week or the week after, it's happening right now, so we have to make this decision, keep these assets here.
I think Mr. Hishida's points, we'll take it too, Reina, which I would like you to take to heart, and that is that we're not deciding today about what we're doing in terms of, because we still have rehabilitation of housing, the low-income housing is not limited to new construction, it also rehab, homes, we do different things. We're not here today to make those decisions, we're here right now to lock up these funds. If we don't act today, the legislature could act tomorrow, we don't, we lose the opportunity. And it's, 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 it's a pretty simple decision, I mean, you could have a thousand people here, I think most people, and they understood that it's a choice of, do we send the money to Sacramento, or do we keep here locally? I think, I don't know why people would, I, I can't imagine people saying, send to Sacramento, I just don't see people doing that. I think they want to keep it here locally, and your idea of being contingent, you have to recognize, we're concerned now about the, whether or not what we're going to do today is enforceable. If you made a contingent, it would just make it that much less enforceable, because what you're saying is that, well, if you take this action, then we're going to do this. Well, the state could just say, we don't recognize that. That's not a, that's not an irrevocable transfer of assets, that's a, that's a maybe, and step right in and take those funds. We're taking the action today we think is necessary to protect those funds. It's pretty simple.
In my eyes, in my eyes, many Californians, including myself, will not agree with Jerry Brown. I know that when I, when I went out and I spoke to my family members about who they should vote for, for district four, we voted for you. I don't believe this is going to happen, yet these funds are going to be moved, and it's going to be, as he said, in many cases, it'll be permanent, so...
Well, Mr. Check, can I make one more comment? Even if redevelopment is going to be eliminated, the, the functions and the end, the goals that redevelopment strives to achieve will, will then, that obligation will fall on the shoulders of the county, and the county will have additional property tax increment in dollars that we receive that we can do some of these projects. It may not be under the same name that it was previously, but I, I think that those goals will still remain on the part of the county, so...
To the extent the funds are obligated.
Yeah, to, to the extent the funds are obligated, and, and those, and programs and rehabilitation of neighborhoods and community development and that sort of thing will still happen, it may just not be under the redevelopment headline.
We all know where these funds are going to go. Railroad construction, highways, you name it, but communities, I don't believe so.
Reina, we cannot use these funds for those purposes, and we won't be using them for those purposes. That, they're, it's not going to be used for railroads, it's not going to be...
There's a really good reason why Goshen, why all these projects are going on in Goshen, Ridge Grove, they're near the highway, we all understand that.
Chairman? Can you put back that schedule again?
We, we do, we do have one more member in the public who'd like to speak.
Good morning, my name is Betty Moorhead, and I'm from the Pixley community, and I just, as dire as this is, and we stand to lose some projects, and we have some projects on the table right now, and we're not sure what's going to happen to the status of them. But we also understand that these are not things that you have sought out on your own to pursue, and it is important to us that we do try to keep these funds, I think it's going to be important to us as community people to keep the supervisors true to their word, and that as the funds were allocated to the communities, they will stay there and not go into a pool, because it's taken Pixley a lot of years to finally have some funds, and so for us to lose the designation of those funds could be catastrophic.
Well, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make one comment. Betty, I appreciate you coming here today to speak with us. Those funds will remain specific to each community that they come from, it, that will happen, and I can also tell you too, one of the projects that you are concerned about, that, that has been obligated, and that will continue.
Right.
So I just wanted to let you know that.
But I, I also want to clarify that the fact the state of California and their bill are taking those funds...
No, I know.
For their, for their general fund.
No, I know.
They will not be allocated...
No, we are here today, we are here today to support your resolution, but we also just wanted to speak as a community that, for the small communities, this is a catastrophe, because it's so hard for us to come up with funds. You know, the urban areas and, you know, some of the larger rural communities have city government, they have a way to collect taxes and earn funds, and, and we don't, we are dependent upon the county, and I, most of the time, I think you attempt to serve the rural communities well, you know, every once in a while, there's just a conflict of interest, but that's okay, and, and I know there's a lot of pressure from the cities, but, no, we support the resolution. Are we excited about it? No, but is it necessary? Yes, because the funds will go to the state, and they will not come back to this valley. That, the history is there, it will go to the very urban areas, you know, so we're thankful, I appreciate Lori and them that have worked with us, and, and we, we hope redevelopment doesn't go away, but it's on the table, and it's one of the things at the top of the pile, so it's, it's at great risk, you know. So, I, I appreciate, I, I don't think you're taking this decision lightly, but I do think you are protecting the assets of the county, and that's a job it's tough to do sometimes.
I, I think that it's been stated by Supervisor Annapole, Supervisor Worthley, and I like to state that if this increment comes back to the county, as a tax increment, it's our intent to keep these programs alive in our communities, because we know how important they are.
Right.
Well, I think it's pretty simple, because, you know, the, the increment that, to the extent it can persist, is to pay for continuing obligations, so it's not like you can take these monies and put them someplace else. And one thing else I want to add too, this, this adds to, I think it's kind of interesting what the state's doing, they were looking for some one-time monies. Obviously, what Tulare County and other counties and other cities are doing is that when they, when they pass this bill, they're going to find out, they're going to open the box, there's nothing left in there. But don't forget, I think they will still pursue it, because there's the continuing funding which goes forward.
Oh, no, they, yeah.
When you lose the tax increments that, that we're now receiving, it will mean more money to the schools particularly, and to state coppers, that, that, that will be a big part of the impetus for them to go forward with this, even if they don't get one-time money, they'll have a continuing flow of money. And I might add, one of the benefits to, to Tulare County in that situation would be that tax increments that now go to redevelopment agencies will come to the county, those funds will be used back in those communities, primarily in public safety, because about 72% of our budget is public safety, but property taxes have been a traditional methodology of providing local services. So there is some redirection of funds that will go, be able to go back into those communities through our general funded dollars, but that's sort of a big picture. This item right now is a very specific item to protect assets, otherwise you're going to the state of California.
And I do think we have to protect those assets.
And I just want to point out, I think that the incentive will still be there for the state to pursue this.
We didn't have a time to gather as a group or anything, but when we got the information, we've kind of been communicating with each other, and I, I just, you know, it's, we, we will have to be prudent, and we're going to have to be real aggressive as rural communities to, in a sense, fight for some of the things that are going to come on the table, and we may have less weapons, but we have a lot of heart, and sometimes that goes a long way, so, you know, we just, I appreciate the heart, I'm on the school board, we're in no man's land, you know, so, you know, I know it's, it's a time of hard decisions, but it would be wrong for this money to revert to the state, we would absolutely lose probably 100% of it, because we don't have the strong-armed lobby.
Thank you, Betty, for your comments, and thank you for coming, and we will, even if this money does go, we as a county will still act on behalf of the unincorporated communities, so rest assured of that.
I trust you will. Thank you.
Mr. Russo?
I just have a few more comments, I, I do appreciate last speaker's comments, and just comments to the gal that spoke before, you know, I'm outraged too that we're, we find ourselves in an environment where there are no rules. You know, you've got, you've got the state government going in and raiding redevelopment, they're raiding any pot of money they can, first five, and other, and other items that were voted, voted on by the voters of the, of this state, and this legislature and governor are saying, we don't care about that, we need money now, we're going to take it, and let's fight it in courts. You know, I think, although I don't agree with all your comments, I, I really appreciate the passion you have for your community, I think that's great, and I wanted to point out that the, the recent involvement of redevelopment staff in your community is because there's a new redevelopment agency director who put more emphasis on redevelopment, reaching out to communities, asking for more involvement. You know, if you look at Cutler, Rosy's column up here, and, and I'll end this with, with this comment, is we've obligated future property tax increment for that waste, is it wastewater treatment plant that we've obligated, Lori? So we, we've identified a project that will have a tremendous impact to your community, and we've tied up future tax increment for the next 25, 30 years to help pay for that project. So your monies have not been wasted, and the future monies that you see in that column will go towards that project, and a lot can be said for that. You made, you made the comment about Goshen and, and earlier Martin Ridge Grove, but just wanted to point out that we have used and we've obligated future increment that will come from your area to, to help build that, that plant, and, and that's, that's something to be proud of. Our redevelopment agency has done a good job in some communities, and quite frankly, has not done a very good job in others. And the turnaround that you've seen the last year or two is because you now have a new director on board, a new CAO who's not going to put up with that type of stuff, and it is unfortunate that we find ourselves today having to take the action that we're taking, but as, you know, as, as the board members have indicated, we're trying to protect these funds from the state raid, and this is all we can do, and we're rushing to get this to the board, because if the governor signs the, the, the bill, the, the budget bill, as soon as he signs it, they can take the money, and it could be anytime, any hour. Last week, both the Senate and Assembly approved his budget, they're just trying to get some Republicans for other, for political reasons to come on board, good luck with that. So, that's why we're taking action today, do we like what we're doing? No, we don't, but we're doing the best we can, and it is what it is.
Thank you. I think that sums it up pretty well. I'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, motion approved.
Moved by Supervisor...
Second.
Second by Supervisor Hishida. Just cast your votes. Vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your input from the communities, we appreciate that, but this is an urgency item, and we had to move forward with it to protect as many funds as we can and not let the state get away with it, so, thank you.
And that is for items two and four. I actually stated that, my...
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes our regular board meeting, do we have need for a closed session?
Yes, we do have need for closed session, we'll need closed session on items A and D, we do not need the closed sessions listed as items B and C on your agenda, so those are canceled, but we do expect a report, we anticipate there may be a report out.
Okay, thank you, we will adjourn to closed session.
Okay. Okay, this is Julia Roberts, Chief Deputy Tulare County Counsel, and I am reporting out on closed session, agenda item number A, in the matter of the case of Genevieve Rodriguez versus the County of Tulare et al., U.S. District Court Case Number 1:09-CV-09-0940, The action of the board was to approve as final and agreement settling the litigation. The substance of the agreement is that the plaintiff has agreed to take a dismissal without prejudice of the lawsuit in exchange for the county waiving its right to costs in the lawsuit. In addition, the county agrees to extend the statute of limitations for the plaintiff to refile this matter until September 30th, 2011. This agreement was approved, this agreement was approved upon motion by Supervisor Stephen Worthley, seconded by Supervisor Alan Hishida, and all voted in favor, and all five supervisors were present, so that was votes by each supervisor in favor of the settlement. And that completes the report out.